All right. Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission. And this is Thursday, February 15th of 2024. Let's begin our meeting this evening with the Pledge of Legits.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the
United States of America. To the Constitution, to the Constitution.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Mary Beth. On the screen, and we've got seven members in attendance, so everyone can vote this evening. Approval of the agenda.
Move to approve. Second. Uh, now I have, uh, we still have a set of minutes that have not been approved. Since, I think it was December, it might have been November.
It was December, but
It was December, okay.
Not much difference.
The December minutes still need to be approved, so I would like to have those placed on the agenda and then to take them off the agenda since we do not have a quorum from that meeting, which just continues to reflect our policies, our manual policies or procedures, which will make these minutes not official until Jerry, myself, Andy, and Howard are all at the same meeting, all at the same time, regardless of who else shows up.
Unless, yeah, let's do them by unanimous consent next time. If Bill and I can remember to put them on the agenda.
We'll put them on.
Does that sound good?
That's fine with me. We just gotta keep track of those things and
If you give everybody homework to go watch the meeting online, then they can all at least review it and see if it's after presentation.
And that's really all we're supposed to be doing, but our procedures would
Then we wouldn't be proofreading it.
Well, would unanimous consent not require the four people who were there to be here? If we passed the bloody
If there was no opposition to the, you know,
I'm sorry.
If there was no opposition to that consent.
Oh, okay.
I think it's probably a good route to go. If, so, okay. We have got a motion and a second for approving the agenda with taking, with adding those minutes, but taking them off.
By adding them there, because they should be there for approval since we haven't approved them.
Okay.
And then I would motion to table that. Well, we can wait until that point in the meeting and then table that for the next meeting. I guess procedurally, that's what we should do, because we can't take action, because we do not have the four members needed in order to constitute a quorum of the, uh, those present at the meeting per our procedures, rules of procedure.
You say we need to add the minutes? They're on here, they're on here.
No, the minutes from December 4th are not on there.
Okay, okay, that's
That is the meeting for which we have not had a quorum in the last three meetings.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, um. We do have some public here, but did you want to speak at this point or later? It doesn't look like there's any other public on the screen. So we'll get down to new business, and that's the subdivision application that we have.
Um. Over here, I guess.
Yeah, you must be Eric.
Yep, I am.
Right, okay, yeah, if you can, that empty chair there. So, welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
This is the Planning Commission.
Yep.
Um, so you've got a, a two-house subdivision you're asking for.
Yep, that is correct.
Can you fill us in a little bit more than that? Who owns the property now? Who will be owning it?
Um, right now, it's, um, right now, the whole property is owned by myself and Steve Wilk. Um, as partners in common, is that correct, Tony? Um, so right, right now, it's all owned that way. Um, until we do, you know, until we were gonna get this portion done to separate these two parcels for our personal properties where we're gonna build our homes, our own homes. And the rest of the land for now is just going to remain in a, um, it's gonna be transferred into a common LLC, and we will own it together, both be able to use it for this, that, or the other thing, whatever we want, so, um, for the time being anyways.
So you've submitted a sketch plan here.
Yep.
Of course, uh, looks like you've got the state water and wastewater disposal taken care of? Or is that just where it's gonna be?
It's in process, those, that is the location in which um, the engineer has picked for the approximate location, like very much, very close to these locations. Um, they have, she has all the GPS data, she has everything that she needs to send in, the, just the final permit hasn't been done yet, but the locations are established for where they're going to be.
Okay, and there'll be two permits here, right? For water, wastewater, and so they're, they're both ongoing?
I'd have to ask, I'd have to ask her that. I think she said something about that they would be, um, like they're individual systems, but they would be done at the same time, because, um, like subdivisions, common subdivisions where they knock up a bunch, they, they do the wastewater systems for the individuals um, all at one, in one process, and because the state actually does want to see like what else is going around, you know, along down there, so I think the permit includes both systems at the same time, so that the state is aware that there are two systems going in near each other, you know, like that.
That makes sense, yeah. Okay, um. So this obviously is a minor subdivision, um, well, um, got a little paperwork to go through here, but there will be a hearing on this. We'll have to put out a public notice that this is happening, so there'll be a hearing, uh, most likely in three weeks, March 7th. And then, um, if there's action at that meeting by the Planning Commission, um, you have 60 days for the final plat.
Yep.
Get that into the town.
So, so what's the acreage there?
The, the total amount? Or yearslot, that's
Well, you talked about, uh, some property that's gonna not be part of the um, plan here.
Yep.
Is this residential, commercial, or
Residential.
Residential.
Yeah.
Okay, so that part that's, uh, gonna be dormant, let's say.
Yep.
Is that gonna be assigned to any one of these so that you get the homestead um, certification on that, or, or not?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I, I guess I'm not 100% sure on the answer to that question, I'm not confident, but
So my question gets back to, what's the total acreage in this?
In, in this subdivision, it's 50, 50, or 45 acres, sorry. 20, 20.5 for this parcel and 24.9 for this one.
Forty-four, the, the math would be 40, 45.4 acres.
Yep. The, the total acreage of the whole, um, you know, parcel that we own, you know, now is 127 acres. Uh, this is kinda like the this one shows the whole thing, it's this, this, and this.
Okay.
Um, and the part that we're looking at on the big map here is this, this area right here.
Okay.
Okay.
The eight and a half by 11 copy of the parcel map shows that, shows the entire parcel.
Which one?
No, the
No, the other one.
The other one.
So as we look at this sketch, let's just go through our list really fast, and, and then there's the waivers, Eric, I'd like to go over with you, although we'd like to go over with you a little bit. Um, so, uh, Planning Commission, um, number one on, on the sketch plan, boundaries and area of contiguous property of owner. There.
Well. We're, I'm just confused as to where the rest of the property is.
It goes, it's on the west side of North Grove Street, and then it also continues the south side of the transmission line. If you look at this sketch right here, Norm, the small one, yeah? I didn't see it, excuse me.
So while they're doing that, um, boundaries and
I'm, I'm actually still confused.
Okay.
Put my head in over here. So where is it? Are we here?
The piece goes around here, goes way down
And it's set into there. This is set into there.
Yeah, their two houses are gonna be in here.
Yeah.
This is what they're splitting, you see the transmission line coming through here?
I do.
Their, their property line is gonna go up here and split it into two, but they own all of this up here. What's this, uh?
So I'm, I'm struggling, is this, is this a stream here?
This, no, no, this is McKinley Avenue. This McKinley Avenue and North Grove Street. You turn right off of North Grove Street and come down over Route 7, like, to McKinley, yeah.
But it's up, it's up near the corner of Grove Street.
And
Okay.
Well, this is right bordering North Grove Street, correct? Bordering North Grove Street, yep. Okay.
Go like that, yes, it does.
And it goes, I wonder, it only goes to the power line here, the edge of the power line.
That's the orientation.
So, you see, that's a power line right here. The Velco transmission line. And what they're subdividing now is just these two pieces right here.
So, yes, so if we can just concentrate down the two parcels.
Okay, one to front on North Grove and one that's front on McKinley.
Yes, sir. And this is the way it's oriented. Yep, correct, yep.
Jim, you see that? Looks like they enter it from McKinley.
Can we come to order again?
Yep, yeah, but it shows it a little bit here too, but it's not, like, did cut it off a little bit here.
Yeah, it's just wondered about
Right, yeah, for sure. Why, I thought about like trying to cram it all, having, right, give me it all in here, but the, the the lot is so big, then it like makes this hard question really small.
It's just a question of orientation.
Right, yeah.
Let's come to order. Uh, let's go through this list. Uh, for the Planning Commission, boundaries and area of contiguous property of owner. Yes, no?
Yes, yes, yes.
Boundaries and area of property subdivided.
Yes.
Proposed subdivision lines.
Yes.
Name and address of professional preparer.
Yep.
Yep. Numerical and graphic scale of plan, date, and north arrow.
Yep.
Right? Existing features and facilities, including roads, public utilities, and utility easements, wooded areas, structures, watercourses, ledge, wet areas, excessively steep slopes.
We're not showing the wooded areas or ledge or anything, which we don't
They usually ask for a waiver on that, or they usually ask for a waiver on that grant one.
It's kind of half drawn in on the, on the minor map too, but the wooded areas and is, is kind of drawn into that, but not at like great scale, just indicates the general area of the wooded areas.
I'm gonna give that a yes, because existing is there.
It's not on this. What are you talking about?
But we haven't been requiring it.
So I, I would ask for the waiver, if it's not required, I'd waive it. Because putting it on some other document, it's not actually being presented, I don't think.
Eric, how much, how much is wooded there?
In the subdivision area?
Yeah.
Um. It's, if I, I'd have to take a rough guess on it, I would say it's somewhere between probably eight and 11 acres, something like that.
Okay.
I'd have a pretty easy time like drawing a line on the map, but estimating the acreages would be a little difficult.
Okay. Okay, proposed improvements, including roads, utilities, and utility easements, rights of way, and structures.
I don't see any utility easements. Well, the Velco right-of-way is on the south end of it. It's, it's, it's labeled. It's the very south end of this property, it's, it's 150 foot. That's the only that's the only power line.
Is that the dotted line on the far left side?
That's correct, yep, yep.
Okay. And it actually goes on a dogleg. Is that right?
Hmm.
Or no?
No, I don't think so.
Not really, no, it's just
Okay. That's just the property line for the other open
Oh, yeah, the dogleg that you're talking about is the property line. Right through the middle of it, is that what you're looking at?
That's not the one I was talking about, I was talking about, you were talking about the far left on my map, I just highlighted it.
It's this thing?
That's the far left. The dogleg is down here, that's still a dotted line, is that a property line? Why isn't it solid?
Because it's just, it's just a right-of-way, it's an easement, a right-of-way line.
So it is, the easement goes here and over to here. Is that correct?
And that, yeah, that property, the transmission line goes straight, it just continues both ways, it's a straight, straight line that goes through.
All the way down here.
Yep.
Running east-west or west-east.
Yep, it goes west, yeah, west-east.
And this is a different easement?
It's a different property.
It's a, Vermont Electric Power has the, has an easement for that transmission line, they have like 150-foot right-of-way.
Uh, understood, I thought we were just talking about this, my question was about this, this line and what it represents here.
That's a property line.
That's a property line now, and it's actually the edge of the right-of-way, of the Velco right-of-way too.
Oh, yeah.
I think is what it is. But it's now
My, that's my question, does that right-of-way go, uh, go north? And that's why it's a split line as opposed to a solid line, which represents a property line, you know?
Well, the right-of-way is actually going east and west.
That's this here.
Yep.
Okay, this is just a property line?
That's about, the solid one's a property line now, because
This is not a solid line, that's why I'm asking.
Uh, well, you're looking at the dotted line, the dash line?
Yeah, the dash line.
The dash line, okay.
From the, from the easement on the, um, on the Velco, uh, power line to the property line that is over here.
The dash line is the south right-of-way line that Velco owns.
So, that's the point that I made in the very beginning, this, this easement or right-of-way does do a dogleg.
No.
No, no.
No, that's it. If you look at the legend, his, his, um, the use of dotted lines for an adjacent owner's property line and a right-of-way line are very, very similar. That's just the, that, that one going this way
Is a property
Is a property line between, yeah, the more property and, and our property. Um, it does look very similar in design to the right-of-way line.
Right.
Okay.
I'm okay.
All right, so we're gonna give that number seven a yes, and the location map is there. So Eric, um, you did fill out our form number two. There were a couple things you had, it looks like you had a question about. Um. So this, these are the waivers. Um, and you had a question about identifying title of subdivision?
Identifying title of subdivision.
What do we usually put in there, Bill?
Just as proposed subdivision lines of, you know, Wilk and Gudel, it's, is that what you're talking about in the title block?
Yeah.
Yeah, that covers both parcels.
So let's go with that.
Names are, yeah.
Okay, okay, let's go with that, so that's a yes.
Yep.
You take the question mark there, um. You're saying yes to everything on this list, uh, down to 15, not applicable drainage systems and connections to municipal and community systems, including sizes and elevations, and showing culverts with rim and invert elevations, existing and proposed. Is that correct? That's a not applicable?
Right, yeah, not that, not that I could tell, I, I wish I was hooking to a municipal system and stuff like that.
So, um, all the basic ones, I just skipped over.
Sure.
So we're down to 15 drainage systems, connections to municipal or community systems.
There's none.
So it's not applicable.
So, um. Yep, um, parks and open spaces. Um, we wouldn't call it the common area, I wouldn't.
Right.
No, that's
Other essential features existing or proposed. Um, the location of all trees, outlines of wooded, so here we are, this is where we probably want to do a waiver.
Correct.
Um. Location of all trees on site, outlines of wooded and open areas, and all other natural features or site elements existing or proposed, and an indication of which natural features or site elements are to be preserved. Any any opposition to that being a waiver?
I, I have some, I have some reservations, I don't know if it's opposition. I, I can under, it's fairly wooded from what I know of, at least the it faces Grove Street, is that correct?
A very thin amount of it is, yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's pretty, that's pretty, oh, there's a little bit of wooded over there, but it's pretty open for the most part.
Yeah, it's, it's mostly open pasture, yeah. Um, but there is, I mean, like I said, I, I would say there's, you know, there's somewhere around 10 acres of wooded area, mostly out by the power lines and stuff in that part. But there is probably a oh, maybe 50-foot swath that runs along Grove Street that, you know, inward, that kind of acts as a barrier between, you know, Grove and, and the field there.
Yeah.
But
I, I don't see why that can't be shown, I don't know what benefit it would be necessarily. That's it, it doesn't, there's no need for it, so to speak, this is, I don't think, I don't think it serves any purpose to show them.
Most of it's a buffer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there are no other natural features there? No streams, ponds?
Uh, there, yeah, there is a brook that runs through it. And that should be shown on or I thought it was, maybe it's not. No, it's not, I guess it's not, I thought it was shown on one of these maps, I know I have a map with it on it. Now, where it crosses Grove, it's a small stream that runs right down through by the existing barn and house, crosses under Grove Street from the swampy area on the west side of North Grove.
Yeah, it shows a brook on, on this last page of the, where it crosses North Grove Street.
Yeah.
Where's that?
So.
Great, thank you. See, that's, broken hard to read, but there's a book but it's not, but it's not on this map, no.
So what would we like to do with that number 18?
Waive it.
I would not, I, I think it ought to be shown on the sub, on the plat. I mean, there's no hardship in asking it to be shown, and you know, we'll comply with our requirements without putting a lot of burden on the on the applicant. So I, I would not be in favor of waiving it to that extent.
Any other discussion?
Are we putting it to a vote?
Um.
Because it must be entered, I mean, we why, why do we have the regulation if the question if it's not worthwhile?
It's one of the things we were supposed to be, uh, doing and looking at the, um, at the regulations to determine whether they're still applicable. And I think that we've had a number, number of, uh, conversations at, at these proceedings where we've decided that we waive regularly similar uh, requests, and we're hoping to move in a direction where we won't have to, because they will not exist anymore, but they exist currently, and so my preference would be if, if we have a traditional stance on waiving them, I would go to waive them as consistent with other, um, proceedings before this body.
As, as a practical matter, it doesn't seem to impact what the intention is here.
Right, so why we have it from the first place is
Is that a brook that dries up in the summertime?
I'm not really sure. Late this summer it was not, but the summer was a little different than most. Um, it wasn't flowing a real lot compared to, you know, when it's wet, but
Okay. So in interest of moving this along, uh, all those in favor of waiving number 18, as we have in past applications, last couple of years, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
I'll go along with it.
Mary Beth, stand and convince me.
Okay.
Yeah, aye.
Okay, we do a waiver there, a couple more here, contour lines based on accurate ground surveys or combination of ground aerial surveys at intervals of five feet of existing grades. Consensus to waive it?
Is that what you said?
That's what I said, waive, yeah, I'd waive it.
Waive it.
I don't have an objection.
Very flat area anyways, and
For what it's worth, I may end up with that data automatically, because I need a bunch of it for here, and if I do, I'll provide it on the plat.
Okay, that'd be great, thanks Eric.
Thank you.
Typical cross-sections and profile of proposed grading streets, highways, and sidewalks.
I don't think there are any sidewalks.
No.
Butting this property, but
And no new streets.
Having walked those streets more times than I should.
Well, Barbara, what, is this an existing? I'm looking at two things, this seems to be, um, the, uh, new gravel drive. Is that considered a street or not a street? Because that's running from McKinley.
That's the driveway.
It's just the driveway?
It'd be a driveway to the house.
It's a very long driveway.
No.
Yeah.
Okay, so not applicable. Um, preliminary designs of any bridges or culverts which may be required. Not applicable.
There is an existing culvert, but it's staying the same.
Okay.
In the, in the driveway, you know, down by the road, by the old house.
Yeah.
So I have a question, if we can go back to 18, we still may waive it, that's not my question, but that driveway is gonna cross parcel uh, B, is it, and go into parcel A, or do I have it backwards? Yes, B into A, does there need to be an easement or something for that?
There, there will be, yeah, like that, that'll have to be tied into our title work when we
Yep.
Um, you know, when we actually have them subdivided and can sell the lots to ourselves, so
Well, I mean, just for future
Yeah.
generations that
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's, no, definitely, it'll definitely have the, the right-of-way there, so Yep.
Okay, and then, uh, next one is all parcels of land proposed to be dedicated to public use in the condition of such a dedication. Not applicable.
Right.
And, and we have this crazy last one, requested waivers, variances, and reasons therefore, therefore. Any other suggested waivers? Okay, say no there, so, yeah.
I do have a question, this piece that you're subdividing is taken out of a much bigger piece, and you say you're gonna be, the rest of it's gonna be in an LLC, perhaps. I would think we, we want the name, at least of the LLC to show what the property is, because on the on the west side of, uh, North Grove Street, it's gonna be LLC, and then on the south end of this tree, just LLC, but you just put the name in the LLC, because it's part of what's been subdivided here.
So is that, that, the parcel on the what, that's not indicated here, Howard, just for my own reference, that's all, that also belongs. That belongs to you, Art, right?
Yep.
Okay, so when we have
The two of you.
There's, there's two, yeah, there's two parcels that are not
This is the one we're looking at.
Yep.
Or part of it, anyway.
This one here.
And then this is the other one.
Yes, that one and, um, the other side of McKinley too.
Yeah, over here.
Yeah, right here, right here, this one, yeah, that one and that one.
Actually, really, it's only one parcel, because they're basically contiguous across the road.
Right.
Which would make them just one, one parcel. I mean, it, it wouldn't be
No, that's, they're three different parcels, like, at least according to the state. Um, like, when they look at it, they're three different parcels. So like, for instance, if we were gonna do something in the, on the So like, for instance, if we were going to do something in the, on the east parcel of McKinley. Like that can be sold on its own.
Sure.
Uh, developed on its own because the road like naturally subdivides it already. So they, they consider it three different parcels.
It, that, you're correct on that, but in the grand list for the town, if it's going to be the same name ownership, it will be just shown as one parcel, total acreage for both pieces. You can always separate them and, and split them up.
So your suggestion, uh, Howard, is to list the LLC both on the west side of Grove Street. And the north side of McKinley Avenue.
And then on the south side of McKinley, knowing where the power line is.
Oh.
In, in the final plat.
In the final plat, yeah.
Final plat.
Um, we do have the LLC established and, and the name for it already installed.
I think that, that should be there because it's part of what's got subdivided here.
Right.
Yeah.
So you're, you're taking these two parcels, A and B, out of the larger parcel.
Right.
So the larger parcel needs to be, uh, identified on both sides of Grove Street.
Specifically, yeah.
Right.
Absolutely.
So however that.
Seems to me this is a four lot subdivision.
Wow.
No, no, just three?
Yes.
Well, it's a two lot subdivision out of a, out of, out of a piece, out of one.
Yeah.
But the residual.
It is, it is making three lots, yeah. It's a three.
The residual parcel was still a lot.
Yes, that's what I think Howard was saying.
Just the name. And, and the acreage that's left over, the name of the acreage, but that, that. Makes it. Complete in my mind.
Because the boundary line ends on this leftmost or southernmost side right by the power lines, right? So where that, where that, uh, power line right of way goes, that's the end of the parcel, parcel A and parcel B, is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so then that would be, uh, listed as the same parcel on the west side of Grove Street.
Yeah, and east of McKinley, yeah.
And.
Wraps around.
And east of McKin.
Well, not, not east of McKinley.
Not east of McKinley, no.
East of, of North Grove Street.
Oh, is this yours over here too?
It's over, yeah, that's ours too. East of McKinley is ours too.
Oh, okay, so there are actually three parts on.
That's right, there is a piece over here.
Yeah. Yeah, there's 20 acres, um.
That's here, that's this part.
Yep.
Okay, so. We have on this map that you've given us, we have, uh, part. Of 127 acres. And then down here on the south side of the map, we have part. Two, that's part, part one of 127 acres. This is part two of 127 acres. Yeah, that, and this is over here is part three. Of 127 acres.
Yeah.
And so out of part two of the 127 acres bordered by the, by the roads, you are carving out two parcels.
Yeah.
So parcel A of part two. And parcel B of part two. Yeah.
Can I ask?
Andy?
Why, why not? Why aren't you just going to subdivide these other two right off right now? I mean, you know.
Like the other side of, I don't know, because I don't know as if we ever want to do anything with them. Might, we might just want to ride our side by sides there. I don't know. I want to sell them or anything, so. We, I mean, and that's kind of why, I mean, it's a harebrained idea, but that's kind of why we're leaving them in common is because it sort of gives. You know, we're good friends. It gives us all the land to use, both of us, you know, what's left over. It's like 70 acres. Or 80 acres left over and we can kind of just do what we want with it and. East of McKinley is really nice down by the river to just hang out and don't really want stuff down there, so.
So that piece on the east side, the surveyor could just, just show where the property lines start to give an indication of, of where that fits.
Yeah.
And then put the LLC name in there is.
Yeah.
So we're giving you enough direction for what we're looking for.
Yeah, you're, I mean, you're looking for an indication of the, the bordering properties and probably the, you know, past survey. There, there is a survey on these, we can give you the remaining. Uh. Lot sizes on the other three that are left. It's 1950 and. Hmm, that little piece I'd have to get back to you on, but I, yeah, include that information. Include that it's Maple Shade Farm here, here and here.
Yep.
And then these two are, you know, the new lots that we made, yeah, that's.
Right, and so the tot- the total will add up to 127 acres or whatever, whatever the current parcel is.
Yep.
And you'll just have the, uh, 20, what is it, 24.9? And then 20, uh, point five and then the rest, all three of these other parts of the parcel. Will add up to the remainder of the 127.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, um. Yeah, and, and just so you're aware, I mean, this was a, a very basic sketch that Ray provided me.
Yeah, that's.
It was all we had to start with or, or whatever and, um. So it's going to be, you know, his, his final is going to be very in-depth compared to this one.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's just one of the reasons why we called you in here.
Yeah.
Initially.
Right.
So, um, does March 7th work for you for a hearing?
As far as I know, or no, March 7th, do we have anything going on then or no?
That's three weeks from tonight.
I think that would, I believe that.
That's the, that's the 10th that we leave, I think.
New York for the eighth. So I think, I think March 7th works.
Yeah, we could, uh, push it to the 28th of March, three weeks after that, six weeks.
Be worse, I think, right? Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So I know, I think that's fine. So we just, we have to be in New York the 8th or the 9th. Yeah, at night. Okay. Yeah, we can figure that out.
Okay.
Okay, okay. So a motion is in order?
If I want to change that, I can notify Bill or something within the next week or something, so a reasonable amount of time.
Yeah, you need 15 days for the public notice.
Yeah, so.
I'll let you know within a day or two.
By Monday.
Yeah, okay, okay, okay. You looked at me a little worried, so I'm worried now and. Okay, cool, perfect. Wife says we're good, so we're good.
That's all you need to know.
Yeah.
Uh, motion to approve the subdivision application, um, presented by Eric, uh, due till on McKinley Avenue.
Approve to go to a public hearing.
Yeah, approve to go to a public hearing.
Is there a second?
Sorry, I got it.
Your choice, Bill. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Posted. Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much, guys. Appreciate it.
Yeah. It's a little tedious working through it all, but.
It was remarkably easy, actually, so, or at least so far.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Have a great night.
Okay, um. Didn't want to see Bill leave the room right now, but, um. Because we're going to do some screen sharing. Um. So we've got, um, three guests tonight. To talk about river corridors. I'm stalling a little bit to get Bill back in the room. Um. You folks want to introduce yourselves? Shane and Kyle and Sarah. Welcome.
Yeah. Yeah, hi, everybody. I'm, uh, Kyle Meadash. I'm with the DEC. I'm the floodplain manager. For, uh, Rottling County, Addison County, Chittenden County, so I typically help the zoning administrators kind of with their. Review of things in the floodplain or river corridor and, yeah, help with Act 250 reviews, park permits, uh, kind of a little bit of everything, so. We'll get into that in a little bit. So Shane, go ahead.
Thanks, Kyle. Thanks, Barbara. Um, good night, everybody, or, good night, what's?
Good evening.
Yeah, um. Good evening, good evening, everybody. Um, I am Shane Jake with, I am a river scientist and watershed restoration, uh, program manager. With the Vermont chapter of the Nature Conservancy. Um, I've been working with, uh, Sarah, who's going to introduce herself next. Um, going around the state and informing municipalities, discussing with municipalities. Um, this topic of river corridors and river dynamics, um, and flood hazard mitigation more broadly. Um, so I'm here with Sarah. Sarah is going to give a present for us tonight. I'm going to sit in the background. And if any questions come up that I can help answer, I will do that, but otherwise you won't be hearing much from me. So I'll pass it over to Sarah.
Thanks, Shane. Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Sarah Noyes and I am the Flood Resilience Educator in a co-funded position with. The Nature Conservancy and Lake Champlain Seagrant. Um, Lake Champlain Seagrant is a program funded by the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Association. And we're based at UVM, um, and our mission is to help develop and share science-based information that will help benefit economies and environments. Um, in Lake Champlain Basin communities. So we're really excited to be here tonight and really excited to be collaborating with Kyle and the DEC floodplain, um, management team.
Great, well, thank you for joining us. Um, yeah, Sarah, why don't you try to share?
Okay.
It's start the.
Let's see.
Oh, good timing, Bill. Just, she just started to try to.
Okay, can you guys see my screen right now?
Yes, you can.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Now we see it full screen, Sarah.
You see it full screen and it's in presenter mode, not in.
Yep.
Okay, great. Awesome, okay. Um, so tonight we are going to be talking about how we can reduce our exposure to flood hazards with a focus on. River corridor protections, just to give everyone a little overview of. What we're going to be talking about tonight. I'm going to start off and give some background on Vermont flood history. We're going to explore together some of the factors that make our, our floods here in Vermont so damaging and then I'm going to hand it over to Kyle and he's going to. Um, talk in more detail about how we can reduce our exposure to flood hazards through floodplain, um, management, more specifically, um, river corridor protections. And then we'll have time for questions at the end, but before we get started, does anyone have any questions now?
Mary Beth, can you see everything?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and Joe, if you want to move the chair to be more comfortable, yes.
Thank you. Where should, where should I move it to?
You're fine.
Outside.
Okay, and everyone can hear me okay through my microphone?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Loud and clear.
Great, that's what I like to hear. Alright, so let's dive right into it. Um, so Vermont has a long history of these large scale flooding events, as you all are probably aware of. Um, these five floods that we have right here on the screen were identified by the National Weather Service as our five. Kind of largest and most costly floods in the past 150 years or so. Um, starting in 1869 because that's when that data was, um, started to be collected by the National Weather Service. Um, and the flooding of the summer would kind of qualify in this group as well, but. Um, that has not been catalogued by the National Weather Service quite yet. Um, but in addition to these large scale events that get a lot of media attention, Vermont has a lot of frequent regional scale floods. Um, so this map was actually made by Vermont DEC floodplain management team and it kind of highlights. Different areas of the state that flood frequently in the highest areas of damage, so. On this, this map, it highlights from 1973 to 2011, kind of the most disastrous regional scale floods. Um, and there were about one every two years. Rutland specifically was impacted, um, by the 1973 floods. 1976, um, and 2011. Again, this, this only goes up until 2011, but from what I've learned. Um, and seen in your local hazard mitigation plan, you, you all experienced a lot of flooding from 2012 to 2018. Um, and of course, over this summer as well. Um, so big takeaway is Vermont floods frequently at large scales and smaller scales. Um, and the types of damage experienced from these floods, we're going to talk about kind of in two categories. The first is inundation damage. So damage caused by rising water and this water will kind of spill out into areas that aren't normally wet. Um, so this is a kind of a classic picture of Montpelier. Um, and the second type of flooding is erosion damage, um, and this happens when. Our rivers are moving so fast that they actually kind of jump their banks and the whole river will move, overtake and just kind of. Dominate the riverbank, taking out anything in its path. So here we have, um, a free striking image of, of some erosion damage that took out a road. And oftentimes it will take out structures in its path as well, um, it can carry structures downstream. Um, and over 80% of Vermont's flood damage is a result of erosion, so that is going to be a big focus, um, of our talk today. So what are the factors that make our floods so damaging here in Vermont? It's a combination of these four points that we're going to go over together, the first being precipitation. The topography we have in our state. Where we've chosen to develop in risky areas and then historic efforts that have been made to try to protect our risky developments. So Vermont is a, is a, considered to be a wet, a wet climate. Um, and over the past 50 years or so, um, our precipitation patterns have been increasing. You can see we're up here in this darkest blue kind of blob. Um, where our. It's from, sorry, it's from 1958 to 2011, the amount of precipitation falling, um, in heavy events has increased by 74%. Um, and that is predicted to continue to increase into the future. Um, so on top of the fact that we have water moving through our. System at all seasons because we have a, you know, we have a wet climate that is getting wetter and will continue to get wetter over time. Vermont also has very mountainous topography, so we have steep and narrow river valleys. Um, and this leaves not much room for development, so historically we have chosen to develop. Um, and the only kind of flat land that there is, which just happens to be land very close to rivers. So here we have kind of an aerial LiDAR shot, um, from Huntington, Shane's hometown. He got the shot for us. Um, and this showcases, we have our river kind of running through the middle here and you can see over time where that river has meandered back and forth and kind of carved out. This space. We have these steeper cliffs here to the south and to the north. Um, and I guess if you were choosing to develop. Somewhere, you wouldn't be able to develop here on this cliff, but over time we've chosen to put developments kind of right in that, um. More high flood prone area zone right next to the river because it, um, because it is flatter. Um, so in response to the creation of, you know, putting our developments right next to the river, we've done a lot of work to try to. Protect those risky developments that, um, have had a lot of unintentional consequences that have made our rivers. More dangerous and our, our flooding events more destructive. Um, so historically it was thought that it was actually better to straighten and kind of streamline our streams. This headline here, I'm not sure if you all can, can read it from how far away you are from the screen, but it says dynamite streamlined streams. Crooked streams are a menace to life and crops and the areas bordering their banks. Um, so there was this big movement to. Straighten all the streams to make way for agriculture or transportation corridors. Um, and it was actually around the same time too, after both of the world wars, there was a lot of large machinery that got shipped back to the US. So there was a lot of large kind of dredging machinery that could be used to do this, so. Um, it was a time of big, big change from taking rivers from their natural state of kind of having these. Beautiful curvy meanders to being these straightened ditches essentially. Um, so here is, here's a visual of the natural shape that a stream will take. Um, it, it will, you know, meander back and forth, expending its energy over time and space, slowing down. It's a very fluid shape. Um, but we have straightened many of our, of our channels to accommodate, like I was mentioning before, agriculture, transportation corridors. Development. Um, so this picture here on the right is the Huntington River and it's been straightened and pushed up against this valley wall. So it's been pushed all the way over, um, and it has been totally straightened. Um, I think it's striking here in this image to, to look at these kind of angular, angular turns that the river is forced to take. Um, it's quite the contrast to our meandering river of the west branch of the Passuscat, um, on the left. And when we straighten our channels, we're. And when we straighten our channels, we're actually making them more powerful. Um, and more erosive. So when we straighten our streams, they're covering less distance, so they'll flow faster. And I like to think about the analogy of a skier on a ski slope. Um, so when you're skiing down a ski slope, you'll take these, you know, big turns to slow yourself down. Um, but if you were to ski down that same slope and just go straight, you would be moving a lot faster. So in these historic efforts that we've made to make room for, for our development, we have um, made our streams more powerful and destructive. Another strategy that we've used historically to control our rivers is to dredge them and dig them out. Um, and we're going to walk through why dredging is not the most effective flood mitigation strategy, but first we're going to take a closer look together at this more natural channel. Um, so when we have a natural channel that isn't dredged, it has relatively low banks here that you can see on the left. Um, and it's really easy for the river to spill out into its floodplain here on the left side. So floodplain is an area next to a river channel where water is expected to flow to when there is a flooding event. Um, and it will soak in a lot of the floodwater and help slow the overall kind of force of the water down. Um, and it's kind of, it kind of acts as a pressure relief valve for a flooding event, for the floods, for the river to be able to jump its banks and go out into, um, its floodplain. But when we dredge our rivers, uh, we make the banks a lot deeper, giving them a lot more erosive power. Um, so there's no opportunity for them to connect to this pressure relief valve and kind of expend some of that energy into the natural floodplain. Um, and so because of this, um, they can often undercut their banks and they will take out you know, roads or structures that are next to them because they're not able to kind of spill out that extra energy into the floodplain. Um, dredging is also really expensive to maintain and it impacts kind of the whole river system as a whole, not just the area that it's, that it's been dredged in. Um, so while it may seem like a good fix, it, it is not something that is sustainable for the long term. And so these five stages here, this is how that we've learned our rivers respond to these actions that we just talked about, the straightening and the dredging. Um, and so, yes, this is, this, these are the stages that will happen after a river is disconnected from its floodplain. So if we all look at this first stage here, um, we have a river kind of at its original floodplain. Regulation, you can see that the banks are short and it can easily, um, connect to its floodplain, jump its banks. In stage two, we have an example of, you know, when we take protective management actions, um, we prevent the floodwater from coming out onto the floodplain. And so the bank will become more incised. Um, kind of similar to what we were just looking at in the previous image with the dredged channel. Um, and then that will normally cause undercutting of the bank. Uh, the banks will fall in and the channel will widen. And eventually the river will create a new floodplain and it is able to dissipate energy across this new floodplain. Um, but through this process, I think it's striking to notice how much land and infrastructure was lost in, in that process. So, um, the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation has assessed over five thousand miles of Vermont rivers. Um, and they've, they've been actually in the field doing this. This is not modeling of any, any sort. It's actually boots on the ground, people taking, taking this data. Um, and seventy-five percent of the streams that they assessed are in these three unstable stages of the channel evolution, this incision widening and then stabilization phase. So that, that kind of gives you a good picture of what, what state our rivers are in right now. And most of them are in that unstable more dangerous destructive channel evolution phase. So while we can't go back in time and change historically where we've developed and the flood or the river management techniques that were taken in the past that have led us to this um, state of having most of our rivers in this unstable phase and we can't control the weather. We do have a lot of actions in our power. Um, that will help us going forward to protect our communities from future harmful development. Um, that Kyle is going to talk through. So with that, I will hand it over to Kyle.
All right, let me, uh, get me set up here too with the sharing. All right, do you guys have that or you have presenter view not?
Yeah, presenter view.
Okay, I think I can toggle it.
There we go.
How's that look? Okay, good. So, um, yeah, I'm Kyle Me Dash. I'm the Western Vermont Floodplain Manager. Um, I will traditionally work out of the Rutland office. We, uh, typically now have been teleworking. I'm going to go through the section here on municipal bylaws. So Sarah kind of talked through the different kinds of flooding hazards and, and river erosion hazards. Um, so I'm going to go through what we kind of do to regulate them and, and, uh, and the different tools we have. So I work in the State Floodplain Management Program. Uh, I think it's just kind of helpful to understand what we do. Um, kind of what we're doing right now, a little bit of training, education and outreach. We have our own FARC permit that we issue for state facilities, um, ag, forestry, uh, power transmission and generation. So the utilities, GMP, VOCO, um, technical support to Act Two Fifty reviews. So we review Act Two Fifty permits under basically the same kind of bylaws that, you know, you would review them under in a municipal setting. We provide support to the municipalities, um, both in the post-flood permitting sense and then, uh, in this sense for your bylaws and also in the sense of when you do get a permit for development in a floodplain or a river corridor, I'm here to help you through that and help you through your regulations and kind of permit that, um, accordingly. This, I just wanted to throw a plug in. If you Google search flood training, our site is the first thing that comes up. There is a ton of information on there. There's a video called Making Room For Rivers. That's about five minutes long. I didn't really want to add it into this. For time's sake, but if you are curious about this after today, Google search flood training, feel free to get ahold of me. You know, there's a ton of information we have put together online and, uh, there, take the time to go through it if you're curious about any of this stuff. So, communities must adopt, implement and enforce flood hazard regulate, area regulations. This is a minimum requirement by FEMA if you want to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. As a community, you're, you know, doing this protection of public safety fees, reducing future flood damages, but you're also making everyone in your town eligible for federal flood insurance. That's residents, businesses. Um, so anyone can buy a federally subsidized flood insurance policy. Also disaster relief, um, funds, grant funding for, you know, new structures and things like that in town. By participating in the National Flood Insurance Program and enforcing your regulations, those are the benefits that you get. And one of the challenges of the way the National Flood Insurance Program is set up is it's a national program, so it's administered at the community level. In Vermont, you know, over eighty percent of our towns have adopted some sort of higher flood standard than the FEMA minimums, recognizing that we do have a, a prevalent flooding issue in Vermont. Um, many only minimally exceed the FEMA minimum requirements. Um, some go as far as prohibiting development altogether. So there's depending on the planning staff at the town and the interest in it, you can really, you know, there's a, there's a FEMA minimum set of regulations that you need for the program, but then you can go all the way up to, you know, like I said, prohibiting structures if, if that's what your town desires. And the FEMA minimums do allow for new development to increase flood height, so increase that flood risk with, I mean, I think there's a lot of literature out there, a lot of discussion right now on how the FEMA minimum standards are not adequate. Um, for Vermont in particular, or generally, they kind of focus on more of how to develop in floodplains rather than you know, flood protection and floodplain function. Which is the next point, they do not prevent floodplain function. Um, we have a little graphic here. I'll talk about the floodway. So that's kind of that area right around the channel that, uh, has high velocity and, you know, the water's really moving through that area. And then you kind of have your fringes out on this area and FEMA, you know, regulations do allow to fill this. And then you get that increase in flood elevations. So right now, currently, what does Rutland Town have on the books? Um, you guys joined the NFIP in September of nineteen seventy-eight. That's pretty common in Vermont. The flood insurance program came out in the early seventies. So at that time, that's when you guys joined and that's when you adopted your regulations. We talked about what that provides for you. Your most recent update was in two thousand and eight because that was the last time that FEMA has updated Rutland County's flood insurance maps. So at that time, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission had a model bylaw and most of the towns in Rutland County adopted that at that point. And that, that bylaw is good. It's very much in line with FEMA minimums, mostly because it was two thousand and eight. And us at the state didn't have a lot of, you know, models or, or things like that at that time. And now in twenty twenty-three, we, or twenty twenty-four, we've really came a long way and kind of thought about that. And we have models and we have that whole flood training website and, uh, yeah, and that's what we'll go into is our model bylaw. Right now, you do not have river corridor protections that kind of Sarah talked about, the river corridor. So you don't have that right now. Which puts you at this twelve and a half percent emergency relief assistance fund rate. If you were to add just the river corridor protections, you get a five percent increase there. So that is, uh, the emergency relief, relief assistance fund is basically after disasters. Um, it's a state cost share. So FEMA usually pays seventy-five percent. There's another twenty-five percent to make up. If you have basically everything that, you know, we, we have out there right now, you get seventeen and a half percent, which leaves the town with only a seven and a half percent share. Um, so now this is our kind of standalone model bylaw we came out with in twenty twenty-two. We created it mostly for towns without zoning, recognizing that there's FEMA map updates coming. These towns are going to need a lot of work to kind of get a bylaw in place. So, so we kind of created that as a starting place for everyone to say, hey, this is kind of the state standard. Um, it does have the floodplain higher standards and river corridor regulation in there. The standalone model bylaw is very much in line with the way I would do an Act Two Fifty review, the way I would review a state park permit. Um, and kind of the, the way that helps us and you is when we have a town that has the, kind of the same standards as we would at the state level, it's kind of easier on the applicant in that if they have an existing Act Two Fifty permit or, or something else, they're meeting that state standard. They're also meeting the state standard for the town permit. Um, so it really just gives us just consistent way of reviewing and developing in our floodplains and river corridors. Um, yeah, and that is on, again, if you just Google like DEC Municipal Assistance, the bylaw is on there. There's an ad version, you can look through it. Um, there, again, there's a ton of stuff on our websites. Once you start digging around. And also, this is a pre-approved by FEMA. So as we come through with these map updates, six months before FEMA releases the maps, they're going to say, hey, we need to see all the town bylaws and make sure they're up to snuff. And what this does and by us providing this is like, hey, they have the state model, they should be good. Um, so ease of review at that map update time. Um, so what are the higher flood standards in our model bylaw? So for new construction or a substantial improvement, we require two feet above the base flood elevation. The FEMA minimums are just elevated to that base flood elevation. So we give an extra two feet of elevation protection, uh, for things like, you know, other encroachments in the floodplain, of climate change. Uh, just kind of giving you that extra height in case the water rises above what FEMA has mapped as the base flood. Um, and then new critical facilities, material storage, junkyards. It kind of keeps those out of the flood hazard area. Critical facilities would be like police, fire, schools, hospitals, uh, things that you probably need in a flood. Um, and then material storage and junkyard, just kind of water quality standpoint, uh, keeping those those petroleum products, things like that out of the waterways. Again, new structures in the FEMA floodway. We talked about the floodway. That's an area right near the channel. Um, if, even in the FEMA minimums, if you wanted to develop in there, it's pretty hard to do because you have to do a hydraulic analysis, make sure that that water is not getting diverted, that water is not going to rise. So that's really not new. One thing I do like about bylaw is it clearly defines what is exempt, what is permitted, what is conditional use. Um, I feel like as we've gone through this in the past ten or fifteen years, we've came up with what are kind of our typical things, what are low-impact activities and kind of let those slide and then, and really get into the things that matter. Um, and then the last thing is kind of a, an, an idea of no adverse impact, NAI, which means like no, no fill. You don't want to fill your floodplanes. And you don't want to have a loss of flood storage. So if you were going to fill somewhere in a small amount, you would look for an area somewhere in that same floodplain, in that same area where you could remove an equal amount of material. Just kind of for a little bit of play for, for smaller projects. You wouldn't do it for a massive housing development or anything like that, but if you had to elevate your house or something like that and you had a near fillout, you could do that. This is just kind of a graphic showing, you know, the river. That river comes up during the base flood. That, that's how we protect. We put little vents in or you fill in the basement and you elevate that up. You know, technically that would be two feet above if you were meeting the regulations. Your low floor here would be two feet above that flood level. And so this kind of explains, you know, we're not, uh, a resilient community can learn and adapt. So we're not, you know, prohibiting development altogether. It, it's really just meant to encourage smart growth, you know, put your new housing, put your, you know, new investments kind of away from the river, recognizing that can be taken over at some point by the river. Keep your transportation out of that area and, you know, keep people safe. Leave your river corridors for your recreation and your, and, and flood storage and and, uh, all those natural functions to reduce flooding. So here's kind of when you look at the map, uh, this is a FEMA D-Firm, uh, digital flood insurance map. You can see that floodway is that hatching. So that's the area you really don't want to put anything new. And then when you go out into this unhatched area, that's kind of where we're talking the no loss of flood storage volume. So that's where you might no fill or compensatory storage, you elevate your structures. And then the critical facilities, um, in some cases you would, you can elevate to the five hundred year flood level. In some cases, you would want to move them away. So here's kind of a graphic, it's that, that compensatory storage. So you have a house over here. You, you want to fill in this area. You also own the other side of the river or, or you can talk to someone over here to kind of take out that equal amount. So that, you know, you, you lost it over here, but you put it over So that, you know, you you lost it over here, but you put it over here, and these aren't huge. Huge construction projects, kind of just the smaller. Residential type stuff that, you know, you might, you might need to add some fill and you might have an opportunity to remove it somewhere else. So here's like kind of our NAI standard now for the river corridor, we just talked about, that was all flood hazard stuff, so that's kind of the. The higher protection from that inundation standards, now we're talking the erosion side of things. That river corridor. And this red line here is is meant to. Depict the river corridor. Really talking about is not building any closer to the river, so if you were here, you wouldn't want to put, you know. A house or a shed or, you know, things out here. Where the river could eventually take them away or where or something that you would put here. That would warrant you to put, you know, riprap all along this bank to protect this thing, you want to keep that kind of stuff out of there. Just preserving that that river corridor so that the river can can wiggle side to side and deposit sediment and erode the banks and do its thing. Straighten out that slope and and over time, you have a. At least less erosive setting. So now, we're in the river corridor. What are the things that we can do, what are? How do we, you know, manage development in the river corridors, recognizing that there's. Already in the river corridor. We don't want to build new things closer, but what happens if there's things in the river corridor and and we want to kind of still build in there? So you have what's called infill, so this brown box represents one structure or. You know, yeah, really an above-ground investment. And this, those two, so you have a three hundred feet area in between here that you'd be able to infill. Other development. The other, so that's the infill, that's a three hundred feet. You know, in between existing things, you get beyond three hundred feet. Now you're looking at this. So you have your structure here. The river's flowing this way. So you have a downriver shadow of fifty feet, you can build your garage here, you can. Add a building addition, you can, you have. The space, you know, on that downriver side of your house to to build. And then also you can, you have the shadow for below-ground utilities, so in the situation of utilities or septic system or. You know, anything below ground, you also have that fifty-foot shadow, so above ground for above ground, below ground for below ground. And now here we're going into that, the. Model bylaw, this is just kind of the list of like activities that are exempted, so things we're not, you know, so worried about, very low impact activities. So removal of buildings, no issue, any changes to structures that do not increase the footprint, so you can do any interior improvements. And and then you also have that downriver shadow, but that wouldn't be exempt, you'd have to permit that. Maintenance of existing sidewalks, roads, parking areas, stormwater, maintenance is anything that's already there, no problem. Functionally dependent uses, so these are crossings, you know, your culverts, your roads, your bridges, recognizing that you have to cross streams at some point. You would have to get a stream alteration permit and go through all those things that you would have to do anyway, but it's not an issue in the river corridor. At the town level. Planting projects, pretty self-explanatory, and then subdividing lands, what we were talking about earlier today, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to. Worry about river corridor floodplain if you were not developing, just subdividing. And then your permitted uses, so you still have to meet that infill and shadowing criteria, but small accessory structures, you just get a permit. Building additions, the fifty-foot downriver shadow, you can get a permit. Any kind of utility improvements in exist. Some way, so if you already have an existing right away and you're doing some utility improvements above ground or below ground, that's permitted use. Septic system, these ones come up a fair amount. Typically, I recommend trying to do, you know, whatever you can to keep it out of there if it's in a dangerous spot, but a replacement, you know, one for one, there's no problem. Access and parking, so you know, things, you know, at grade, access roads or parking areas. Just keeping the investment down, you wouldn't want to do, you know, big paved parking lots, lights, curbing, things like that. Attached decks or patios, so they can go on your house, less than two hundred square feet, unimproved trails. We've been talking a little more about trails, but you know, like a mowed trail to your fishing hole or swimming hole, something like that, no problem. And then the river and floodplain restoration projects, also permitted use. So, yeah, then I just have my information there, I am always available if you ever have any questions, I've been. Pretty busy lately, so I try to get back to people as soon as I can. But, yeah, if you ever wanted to talk about these, if you have specific, if you're a property owner and you have a specific. Property you want to look at, I can kind of give you a quick rundown on it. Yeah, anything like that, so. Yeah, thanks, everyone, and yeah, does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions at all, anything hurt your interest or?
Can you make a statement? So can they see me? Oh, here I am, yes. My name is Joe Kraus, I live in Rutland Town, I'm a member of the Nature Conservancy. And the reason I'm here this evening is because I also serve in the Board of Directors of the Southwestern Vermont Chapter of Trout Unlimited. For the last. Gosh, fifty years, we spent most of our efforts working in Bennington County, the Meadowwee, the Batonkill. The Walloom Sack and all the rivers down that way. We have concluded that we are long overdue addressing. The watersheds and river corridors and resiliency in Rutland County. So we are starting to explore what. What it is we might be able to do to contribute to the efforts that you're all undergoing currently. To that end, we have a meeting scheduled with. Bill Eldridge, who's the State Aquatic Habitat Biologist. As well as Austin Gallinat, he's the Fisheries Biologist. To have a preliminary conversation about their thoughts on what we might do together to make things better. And hopefully those conversations. Will identify projects, watersheds, corridors. That might need some attention, where we might be of some assistance. And I'm hoping that that ultimately will lead to conversations with Shane, Kyle and Sarah. About the potential for partnering on these resiliency projects. So you hopefully will be hearing from me in the days and months ahead.
Yeah, absolutely, that's great, yeah, I work with Will Eldridge a lot, we put on a Rivers and Roads training and. Yeah, he's a great guy and it sounds like you guys have some good things in the works and, yeah, like I said, just let me know if you ever want to get involved or. How I could be of help to you guys, yeah.
Thank you, you'll be hearing from me, Kyle.
Yep, thank you.
I'll just say likewise to that, you know, you guys, the trout on rivers, trout unlimited has been doing a great job. We work with Aaron Rogers a lot. And largely on on wood addition work, riparian buffer planting, so yeah, look forward to any any future conversations about. Ideas for for improving habitat in the rivers of Rutland.
Excellent.
Jim?
The first speaker. Mentioned risky development. And I certainly can understand. What that might might be. But. My question is, is most of this risky development that you talk about. Recent. Say twenty to thirty, forty years old? Or would it be historic?
That's a good question, and I can start to answer and then I'm going to hand it off to Kyle, because I think you have a better handle on that. I mean, historically. Vermont has settled. Its villages kind of right on the river, so a lot of those, I guess, structures that are most. In the most hazardous areas are are much older structures, but Kyle, I bet you could speak more to the. Past twenty to thirty years of development.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, probably not so much, I think a lot of our big problem spots are more, you know, the historic stuff, the stuff that's been there for a long time. That said, I mean, kind of what we're talking about right now, like if you have a town that has lax floodplain or river corridor rest. Regulations and you have a. Particularly ambitious developer. You can get those things in now, so I think that this whole thing is important. To kind of keep that stuff away from the river as we move forward here and. You know, as as the state, as we move through it, you know, after the flood, we've been doing a lot of buyouts, we've been doing a lot of, you know, scoping studies, looking at different things that we can do for towns, so. I think as we move here, we're just trying to, you know, keep things away from the river and also move things away from the river. But that said, in a municipality that doesn't have strong regulations, that can totally happen. Especially if there's no state jurisdiction or funding involved, so. Yeah, that that's kind of why this stuff is important, and that's, you know, probably what we haven't seen.
I have another question too. About fifty years ago. I was on the select board over. The other side of the mountain of the town there. And. We had. A tremendous flood in seventy-three and that was noted up here earlier. And at that time. We were taking, the town was taking gravel out of the river. By permission from the state and the feds. According to their direction. And then all of a sudden that stopped. And I often wondered. There had to be places where the stream bed was really building up. Without that. Gravel being taken out of the river.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's totally, and that that, like Sarah said, that was always our thinking, right? Move it out of the river, move it out of the river, keep the river open. And as time went on, we've just realized that you can't fight it. You have to let the river deposit the sediment and it will find its way around it and through it and create, you know, that that low slope and that meandering channel. You just really need to give it the space. Because it's just really hard to fight it with machines and what do you do with the material and who pays for it? And, you know, we have so many river miles that that's a problem, that it just never works, so we. Figured out that this passive restoration approach is a is kind of a better system. And, you know, you're not fighting the river, you're just keeping things away from it and, you know, it's better for budgets, it's better for fish, it's better for. People, it's, you know, it just seems to be better all around, even though, you know, there's still those areas where you think that, you know, pulling material. Out may help and it may help in the short term, but if the material deposits there, it's going to keep depositing there and you're going to have to keep taking it out.
Well, the the. Channel straightening concept that was mentioned here earlier. Isn't that in conflict with? The need to slow water down when you have a.
Yeah, yeah, and I think maybe you just mixed it up there, Sarah was kind of explaining that. That's how we kind of got to this point, because we used to streamline the streams. And that's kind of where a lot of our destruction came from, whereas now we're trying to go back the other way and make them more natural like they were, you know, a couple hundred years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Could I, could I jump in and add, I want to add a little something to the question about dredging? And. Just to add a little bit more to that. If we think about the fact that. You know, eighty percent, approximately eighty percent. Of all of our flood damage costs results from erosion damage. Right, versus inundation damage, so inundation is when the water comes up, everything gets wet. The water drops back down. We go into all of our structures, we got to dig out all the sediment, we got to cut out all the wallboard for three feet above the floor, right? And get all, get all the wet destruction out, and that's pretty expensive. But the erosion damage, you know, and Sarah had a couple really good pictures of erosion damage, that's like. When Route Four gets taken out during Irene, right? And, you know, a lot of our transportation infrastructure gets taken out because the river just massively fails, the river fails the banks. Houses come into the brook, that's the, that's the really expensive stuff. And what we've realized. Is that when we settle the landscape. Built structures along the river, because that was, it's just, it's a really developable place, right? Well-drained soils, flat ground, it works really great for development. But, you know, after five, ten, fifteen years, we recognize that we were getting wet all the time, so oftentimes we dredge the channel to keep the water. In the channel. Out of our basements, out of our fields, et cetera, right? So. But what we did when we did that is we disconnected that floodwater from that floodplain pressure relief valve. And all of that energy that used to spread out across the floodplain. Was trapped in that river channel and all that floodwater and its erosive energy went to work on the channel bed and banks and the channel started cutting downward and getting deeper and deeper. Until eventually the the bank started to cave in, so and our channels became really unstable. And the amount of erosion increased, so what we've realized, you know, one way to think about it is. We saw this inundation problem and we said, well, geez, we know how to fix that, let's dig the rivers out. What that did was that traded that fairly expensive inundation problem for a really expensive erosion problem. Right, so that's an important point and that's what has, that's one of the things that's really influenced the larger scale thinking around dredging as a flood mitigation practice. That really, it's just taking the the inundation hazard and and creating, trading that out for an erosion hazard, which ultimately is much more expensive. Does that make sense to anybody?
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
This could be for any of you, how would you describe the situation in Rutland Town? I mean, part of the town has the Otter Creek coming through it. So that's, that's something to pay attention to, but most of the town is is like in a valley. So what what are the dangers upstream, you know? Coming from upstream to, you know, a place like Rutland Town, which is pretty flat.
Yeah, I mean, you have the East Creek drainage. The Tenny Brook drainage, so you kind of have that on the north side of town. And then the Otter Creek is, you know. Pretty amazing, I mean, it floods in some spots, but it's mostly has a lot of wetlands near it, has a lot of conserve land anyway. So I don't see that one as a huge threat, there's not really a lot of development near it or in the floodplain either. Your your biggest thing is probably like. That's probably the most destructive that I could think of. Because a lot of the stuff kind of up in the headwaters, the headwater areas also has a lot of. Farmland and and kind of bigger parcels, so there is some storage up in that area too. Yeah, I mean, in terms of Rutland Town being in a valley. I think you're better poised than a lot of other places, but. I don't know if Shane, you have anything to add to that? I I, you know, guys don't have a ton of flooding issues right now that I know of.
We, yeah, we've escaped them recently.
Yeah, yeah, like where are your big problem spots?
Oh. I would say along the Otter Creek. I would say along the Otter Creek.
Yeah.
Well, just in center Rutland, right? Because there's historical buildings along Business Route Four and so like.
Yeah, that's probably, that's probably the biggest where I've, yeah, exactly. Along Route Four there. Hmm. But there's not a lot of neighborhoods or anything like, it's mostly bigger, uh, you know,
Merchant.
Probably unoccupied stuff when it's flooding anyway.
We have one unique advantage. Uh, the headwaters of East Creek are behind a very, very large reservoir that has an immense storage capacity. So uh, that protects us. The reservoir is operated so that to optimize it for power generation, but it has the secondary impact of flood control. If you took a look at East Creek after Irene and Mendon Brook, Mendon Brook was obliterated. It was hard to recognize. There was no significant damage to East Creek at all because of that storage capacity there. So it gives us an advantage that most towns do not have.
But there's always this discussion about should there be a release from that dam and how much and and, and just playing that game, how much rain is going to fall? So how much do we need to release and?
Yes.
Where does it go?
Uh, it follows a natural riverbed. There's, to my knowledge, it's never been flooding. This was an area I was responsible for one time in my life as a result of, of planned releases from the reservoir.
Utility controls that too. They, they watch it very carefully using a generation and, and going into a spring thaw. They really are looking at that reservoir and, and drying it down and being, being prepared for things like this. They've done that forever, for many years. So that, that's, that's a big help.
Close to a hundred years.
The, in, in Rutland Town, um, there's probably more, there, there may be more structures and people on the small streams of the river corridor, um, than there are, you know, in some of the larger parcels that are, you know, in the river corridor itself. Um, so it, it'll be a matter of convincing those people who live on a, you know, a brook or something like that, that they, they can help the problem or that they can help the town by uh, limiting some development there. Um, do you have any advice for us for making that case?
Uh, I mean, the small streams really only have a fifty-foot setback measured from the top of bank uh, or slope depending on the setting. So I don't know if there's any, you know, real small parcels or it's just kind of a fifty-foot no disturbance setback, so no ground disturbance, like you could have your yard in there or you know, trees or landscaping or, or whatever. Uh, so yeah, I don't, I don't typically run into a ton of problems on the small streams with the fifty-foot setback. Because typically if you're going to build a house or something, you're going to want to keep it at least fifty feet away uh, from that water, like that's, you know, typically the bottom of the stream is your water table. So uh, yeah, I don't run into a ton of issues with the fifty-foot setback on the small streams. Yeah, I mean, the biggest things like I saw was probably like on the East Creek, kind of like post-road area where it goes under Route Seven. There's some development on the other side there in the river corridor. Uh, some of those parcels maybe in, in the actual river corridor. Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
And then.
Isn't the problem more? I'm sorry, you have the recognized data.
No, go ahead, Norm.
Isn't the problem not so much new development? But modifications to existing residences, existing commercial properties, et cetera, uh, in those areas.
Is that what you hear?
Yeah, yeah. But, yeah, that, I mean, I definitely see, yeah, that's most of the time what you see is modifications to existing properties. Which you can do, like I said, you still have that infill opportunity, you still have that downriver shadow opportunity. Um, so yeah, basically we're not trying to build anything new that would want you to protect that, that bank. Anything that's existing, you can kind of infill it and move around. Uh, so yeah, and it does limit it to some degree. Like I said, you only have that fifty feet on the down, downstream side of the building. Uh, so yeah, there, there's ways you can still work within the regulations for existing development. And then it kind of keeps the new stuff out of there.
Thank you.
I want to say thanks for the presentation to start off. It's been uh, really um, eye-opening and education and easily accessible. So uh, thanks for coming this evening. Um, but my question is a technical question. It goes back to Sarah. So Sarah, you presented those five scenarios at the very beginning of this, almost an hour ago, maybe now. Uh, but I, I've latched on to it, so I just have to ask. Uh, those numbers in terms of dollars that you presented for each of those floods, are those um, in historical dollars or are they in inflation adjusted dollars for comparison?
Um, they're in inflation adjusted dollars for, I believe, twenty twelve.
Great, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
That's probably the easiest question you've had all evening.
And the right answer.
I thought they were, but I just had to ask.
It's a good thing to check on. I appreciate it.
So yeah, and too, I'll, I'll just add like, we're, we're not here to kind of sell you on anything. This is purely educational. Figure out if river corridors are right for your town. Talk to your landowners in the river corridors. You know, make sure everyone kind of knows what's going on. I think that's the best way of doing these things. But yeah, like I said, we're, this is purely educational for you guys. You stand to have a, a small financial benefit, a big benefit to protection of your natural resources. But this is purely, I'm, I'm not trying to, to you, this is your decision. It's up to you. This is, feel free to contact us if you have any information or questions as you're presenting this to your peers. But that, you know, that's, that's, this is all for you and we're here to help you through this. Uh, we're not here, you know, against you or try to push anything on you.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time and yes, a great presentation.
Yep, yeah, thanks everyone.
I think that presentation has legs. I think you might be able to use it elsewhere.
Thank you, Barbara. And I, I would just add, if, if, as Kyle mentioned, you, you do have more conversations in town and you, you're looking for, you know, if you'd like us to come back and present to others, um, we'd be more than happy to do that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep, good night, everyone.
Yeah, thank you all. Thanks for having us. Any afterthoughts or should we just?
I have a few if you want to hear them.
Of course we do.
Uh, thought number one, um, I think it was Kyle that mentioned the Google, uh, Google search for flood training. Um, that, that would be worth us uh, looking at at some future meeting ourselves. It's only five minutes. Um, and I think it would be worthwhile for us to educate ourselves with that. I think it could also potentially be used as a, as an education tool for a presentation to the public. Thought number one. Uh, thought number two. Um, uh, Barbara, I had whispered to you about whether we have the model bylaw already and have we looked at that? I just don't remember. It's a.
Yeah, it's been a while though.
We have, okay. Uh, that might be another thing that we would want to uh, get back and look at and then decide how much of that we might want to present to the public and what kind of doses. And uh, then uh, the third thing is I think we should add Joe Kraus to our outreach and education team.
Whether he wants to be on or not.
You asked me what I had for thoughts, so those are my three thoughts.
If you'll make that motion, I'll.
I'll make a motion.
The only thing is, the amendment is without.
Can't you adjourn the meeting quickly?
That's kind of fun.
Your motion without compensation. Now, understand Mr. Kraus and I know each other.
I, I, I do understand that. So do I, so do we.
Yeah.
What's the status of the flood maps being updated?
The FEMA flood maps?
Yeah.
Um, it's still a few years off. And Kyle was mentioning, you know, when they come out, your bylaws should be updated. You don't really have bylaws, but it would be good to have this river corridor protection. It would grease the skids a little bit with, with FEMA. But um, it's still like twenty-six or twenty-seven before we even start reviewing them for Rutland County. Yeah. They're working their way around the state.
Do we do anything in preparation for that? Anything serious or do we have to wait for them to come to us?
Um, we kind of have to wait for them to come up, to show us the drafts and such. Be part of the process.
But, but we can begin the education process before we actually look at the um, actual adoption of the river corridors themselves.
Yeah.
And I think that from, from this meeting this evening and from the presentation uh, by the team, uh, it, it seems to me that that's, that's the right approach to take to help people uh, better understand what's at, what's at stake and how they can be part of a solution. And what is it for them as opposed to the constraints that might, they might be thinking.
Right, there's a lot more meat to that. I mean, when the maps come out, I mean, there may be some sections of town where the floodplain is, moves, shifts a little bit, but it'll be pretty minimal probably.
And I, I think that the perspective um, from Trout Unlimited would be a, a good one for town residents to understand. That's why I was kind of volunteering you.
I, I think you'll find with the high water table that we've had for almost a year now, that there's going to be some significant changes when the water drops so we can see what's underneath. I really do.
What do you think is underneath?
Well, the, the Hoover over there, that's huge. And you get that thing full of water, you got a problem.
Not to mention our pocket park. On the Otter Creek. I know, I know. We, we might have to revamp some of the plans there. Take another look at that. Mary Beth, anything?
Um, well, I was thinking of trails and the, right in the pocket park and um, but it sounds like we could have a path where it could be permitted. Um, so is um, trails, the need to cross or run along a, a stream or river. Um, it sounds like we could work that into the bylaws um, to consider. Um, just because um, in river corridors, I think recreation is still important, like you mentioned mode paths. Um, but that would be one thing that I would look at if we were developing the bylaws.
Yeah. Yeah, not to consider them, just only dangerous.
Right.
Okay. Okay. We shall move on um, this evening to the rest of the agenda and wrap up this meeting. Um, very quickly, an old business, the um, survey. Remember that Housing Navigator survey? So it's actually doing pretty well in Rutland Town. It has about seventy, this was more than a week ago, had seventy respondents. Um, and quite a few comments about where housing should go. So, yeah, yeah. So that should be interesting to read through those when it's done. Um, I think um, Logan at RRPC wants to leave it open till March. So we, I, I just recently put it on front porch, porch forum to get some more um, visits and some more uh, people filling it out. So we'll see if that works.
In addition to the website, the town website? Or is it on there?
It's on the town Facebook.
Yeah.
Page.
But it's not on the website?
No, um, I don't have a good spot for it, but it's gotten some attention on the Facebook page, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, quite a bit. So um, I think it's in the minutes that it's going to be on the town website, but we'll get to that in just a second. Uh, anything else? Any announcements from anyone else? About a fire happening right now?
I got just one comment about the survey. I did it today. And I think there should be more space in there for uh, personal assessments and personal views. It's pretty limited. And the other thing that uh, I was troubled with, that you would have a whole selection of um, choices. There might be seven or eight of them there and a couple blocks. And you can only pick one. And there may be reasons that more than one should be picked.
Okay. Jim. Okay. Um, let's move down to the minutes of January twenty-fifth.
Both to approve the minutes of January twenty-fifth.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, I stand corrected. I just said we'll put it on our digital platforms.
I, I interpreted that as website, but as well as other things, but that's why I asked.
Is there room on the website?
Uh, it's a spot that we can put it, that someone can actually find it. So we don't really have like a the cure for all our surveys. We don't, we don't do them very often, so.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I can, I can probably, I can like.
And I can work on pushing people there.
Yeah.
I mean, it gives more than one place to find it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any other comments on the minutes? Hey, all those in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
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 I opposed.
I'm standing.
Okay, um, anyone want to make a motion to adjourn or we just having so much fun here?
Oh.
Second. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.